Good evening and welcome to the Milton Planning Board. Today is Thursday, July 23rd. This is the second meeting of Fiscal 2016. My name is Emily Ennis. I'm Chair of the Planning Board and I'm going to ask the other members to introduce themselves.
I'm Alex Whiteside. I'm a member.
Michael Kelly, member.
Oh, sorry. I'm Julia Getman.
Tim Sherwinski, Assistant Town Planner.
Brian Furz, member.
Cheryl Togias, member.
And we are being both broadcast and taped tonight. So I'm just going to run through tonight's agendas. Our next meeting dates are August 13th, August 27th, and September 10th. We also have a public forum this Tuesday on July 28th and we'll be talking about our August Public Forum tonight. We do not have past minutes to approve tonight, but there are some in your agenda to review. We will have Citizens Speak. Under New Business, we have an A and R for Highland Lane. We have two public hearings tonight, one at 7:15, a site plan approval for 333 Brushhill Road, which is continued from June 25th. One at 8 for a preliminary subdivision for 41 Pleasant Street, continued from July 9. Under Old Business, we have 865 Brushhill Road Special Permit Site Plan Review Scenic Road, 11 Bryant Avenue Site Plan Approval. We also have the appointment to the Long Term Capital Needs Committee and the discussion for the zoning articles for October 2015 and the process. We'll also be talking about the forum at that time. The last couple of things under Old Business, we're going to weave throughout the meeting as we have time. So, Tim, on the A and R, do we have the person here to take that first? All right, come on up. We'll do Citizens Speak right after that. Didn't want to hold you.
Welcome.
I'm a lot at 51 Highland Lane. Can we do all the copies of the plan?
Yep.
So basically just break the lot off from the property. It needs all the requirements.
All right. Tim, have you had a look at this? Need some requirements? Or was Bill looking at this one?
Bill did not report to me any sort of objections or anything.
Members, do you have any questions on it?
Well, it seems to me that you should note what the frontage is, which is of course measured in a straight line under our rules.
Right.
Between four Lot B. And you know, I measured it and as long as this easement is part of the other frontage, it looks to be 150 feet.
It's written on the plan accordingly and that's what the engineer has down on the plan, fronted 150.3.
I understand, but usually, rather than just saying it, you show it on the plan.
On the dimensions.
So you want, so you'd like, so you'd like point to point?
A little point to point, exactly.
Does it, 130, I believe the, it's in two sections. I think on the first section is 136.31 feet and then there's another smaller section to the right of the bond.
Right.
That's 14.02.
From the bound, 14.02, which is 150. And we're talking about from your, we're talking about the Lot B court distance.
Yeah, I explained that to the engineer, as did Bill Clark, so I believe that's what he's showing here.
He's going to show what?
No, that is what he measured. He's.
I know that's what he measured, but it would be nice if the plan showed that that's what he measured.
Okay.
In other words, do a cord length.
Show the cord.
Because we don't, we don't care what these measurements are around the street itself. We, what, all we're concerned about is the cord length between side lock panels.
Got it. So you set a straight line?
Yeah, exactly.
Yeah, got it.
But I measured it and it looks to be 150 feet and he says it's 150 feet and I think it is 150 feet.
Okay.
But if you add that to the plan, it seems to me that we could endorse this as not requiring subdivision approval.
All right, let's just check with everybody else. Anybody else have any comments? Carol, Mike? All right. Alex, is that a motion? Do you want to formalize that?
Of course, it's a, yeah, it's a motion.
All right, so, motion on the table to endorse this as an approval not required plan with the changes requested by Alex to show the frontage for Lot B. Do I have a second? Other comments or discussion? All right. All those in favor?
Is that something that, would Bill be able to sign that or do we have to come back and?
Well, we're, yeah, we're, the motion is to authorize Mr. Clark to endorse the plan on behalf of the board that subdivision approval is not required.
Once that change has been made.
Once that change has been made.
I'll accept that. Change, anything else? All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, great. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
So just have that change made. Take it into Bill.
Will do. Thank you.
All right, so since I skipped it last time, apologies. Is there anybody here who wishes to speak at Citizens Speak? So something that is not on the agenda for tonight. All right, seeing none, we will move on to the next item. Tim, we have about nine minutes or so before the first public hearing. Do you want to introduce 11 Bryant Avenue and then we'll get that dealt with or possibly at least started?
So 11 Bryant Avenue was the site plan approval for the canopy over the Shell Station in, on the other side of East Milton Square. We talked about it not last meeting, but the meeting before. And the board voted to approve with a few conditions. One of those conditions being that the site plan approval will be contingent upon sign review by the Sign Review Committee and the Board of Selectmen and that the applicant will provide specification sheets for any decorative or accent lighting element on the proposed canopy and that any such decorative or accent lighting will be treated as a sign and be sort of on the table for sign review and those, that condition's in here. And I distributed this draft last week for everyone to take a look at.
Does anybody have any comments on the draft?
I actually read it and I thought it looked good.
Mike?
Brian? Does that look consistent?
Yeah, I agree. So, are we all ready to sign this?
Yes, I think we are.
All right.
I don't think, I think we voted it.
We voted it?
I guess we should, we could vote again.
So do you have copies?
I have three copies.
Okay, great.
Everyone can put their signature on the second page.
Okay, okay.
All three.
Great. Pass, if you start it off, Ryan, and pass it around, that would be great. So while you're doing, while we're doing that, Ben, I'm going to ask Ned, why don't you come up and get us started on 865 Brushhill Road?
Okay, hopefully we can start and finish.
So actually I'll kick off, if you don't mind, and have you and Tim available to comment. So we had closed the public hearing last time and we're to begin our deliberations tonight. There are two outstanding items that the board should be aware of. One is, I understand that Alex and Ned have been going back and forth on the language of the drafts, special permit, site plan approval, scenic road approval. And you guys are close, but not quite there, getting very close. And then the other thing is, if you remember, we had asked NCH Engineering to take one more look based on what the applicant had come back to us with. NCH has some further questions. Unfortunately, the applicant's engineer is unavailable this week. So what we're going to do is we're going to have our deliberations at the next meeting, August 13th. And by that time, I would expect that the draft special permit would be in a form that all of us will be able to read the final one before the meeting itself, rather than discussing it tonight, and that the engineering questions can get clarified so that we're all ready to do the deliberations on the 13th. So is that, do I have, Tim, Ned, Alex, is that consistent with what you all know about your pieces?
That is consistent with what I know and understand and I would ask the board to continue any deliberations until the 13th.
Alex, it's consistent?
I think that continuing the deliberations until the 13th are fine. There are some unresolved matters, but the 13th is, sounds like a nice date to, to close them.
Okay, great.
I'm going to pass around the letter from the peer reviewer, NCH Engineering. These are the issues that the applicant engineer is going to be looking at.
Great, so we can review that for the 13th and hopefully have a resolution on that. And then, just so everybody knows, the 13th, we'll then have Fair, we'll have 865 Brushhill, we'll have our own zoning stuff, and that's going to be it for the 13th. Anything else tonight that we need to continue, we'll continue to our second meeting in August, just so we have that date clear. So, all right, thank you very much, Ned.
Thank you.
All right, so, so why don't we look at the appointment to the Long Term Capital Needs Committee in the next five minutes before we start our public hearing?
Where is the special, oh, is Brian signing it?
Nope.
Where did it go?
Probably in front of Emily.
Emily's.
Oh, Emily is signing.
She's in front of me. So I'll sign it while Tim tells us.
I think, I think that's fine, just, just keep it moving.
I will keep it moving while Tim tells us about the Long Term Capital Needs Committee.
This is an appointment that the Planning Board traditionally has a liaison to this committee. There was a raft of appointments that the Planning Board did, I believe not last meeting, but the meeting before, and there was some discussion about whether Bill Clark could be the liaison to that committee, just because they tend to meet during the day in Town Hall. It made all sorts of logistical sense. That's no good. It's got to be a planning board member.
Is this a town policy that it has to be a board member or is not a, does it?
I believe it is.
Or a bylaw requirement?
I, I'm not entirely certain, except that Bill can't do it and you have to do it.
All right. So then, question, if you want to do it or if you want to, rather than, you know, volunteer tonight, just have a thought about it. Do you know how often they meet?
I don't know how often they meet. I, geez, I feel like, I remember we talked about this, it might be once a month, maybe every six weeks. I don't, don't quote me on that, but it's not every week or every even two weeks, I think.
Since, since the position is just liaison, just to observe, report, whatever, maybe we can do it out of convenience, in other words.
Take turns, who can make it that meeting?
Is it a liaison or do we get a vote?
That, that I don't know.
Okay.
I thought we got a vote.
If, if we, if you get a vote, then you're going to have to have, have the person.
So then, if you could, for the next meeting, check on what the requirements are, not even for the next meeting, just check on what the requirements are.
And get that information.
And send them around and then we'll point somebody at the next meeting. So if we don't have to have a particular liaison, then Mike's idea is a great one. But if we have to have a specific person, we'll, we'll figure it out. It's an important position.
Since we're asking questions, is there any opportunity to move it to not be a daytime meeting?
That's another good question.
I think that's really the question.
And I think that's, that's a sort of constant.
Even if it was your morning meeting.
Right.
Discussion amongst that group. I believe sometimes they've met at 4:00. I think recently they've met early in the morning at like 7:15, 7:30, which has worked for some people. I mean, it is obviously, you know, a compromise amongst, amongst the group, but I think there has been discussion as to sort of how to, how to do it in a way that's equitable. You've all been on committees before, it's tough.
Right.
But I can, I can do, I can ask about, you know, what their sort of thinking is on that currently.
That'd be great. Excellent. All right, so that is that, so that leaves the only outstanding issue that's old business will be the process for discussion of zoning articles for the October 2015 Town Meeting. And I'll just kick off a little bit for the next 30 seconds or so. You should have received an outline of the draft agenda for Tuesday night's meeting. I've changed it slightly. All the people who are doing workshop presentations will have helpers, so we'll talk about that. And then the schedule and the process for the articles, I have met with both the Warrant Committee and the Board of Selectmen and have general agreement from both of them on the flexibility that we're looking for this year, so I will speak to that when we get there. And by my phone, it is now, and by that clock, it is now 7:15. So let's bring 333 Brushhill Road forward.
Thank you.
So, let me introduce this and then we'll have you introduce yourself. So this is a public hearing for a site plan approval for 333 Brushhill Road. The process is the standard process. We're going to have a report from Tim on outstanding new items, an update from yourself. And we'll have questions from board members, testimony from members of the public, and we'll identify outstanding items for the next meeting. When we get to the public testimony, I will give a reminder on how that works. And for the moment, Tim, do you want to give us a quick update on progress since the last time we met on this?
So the last time we met on this was back in June. They, a, we had commissioned a peer review to take a look at the applicant's stormwater and drainage plan. And so what we're seeing right now, materials I just handed out, are the response to those. The Planning Board has, you know, a requirement to get materials in by the Thursday before the meeting. These came in a little late, so I think the way that I anticipate this going is Fred will, will make a presentation, explain what you're seeing. Since you've had zero seconds to actually review it, I think that'll be, you know, it and then, you know, the, the, another issue is that we've had, I believe we've got some, some of the butters and some neighbors in the craps net that want to get a chance to speak about the project. So that's kind of where we stand and hopefully it will be a more thorough discussion about these materials as they relate to the peer review at the continued hearing.
All right, sounds good. So we'll have you let us, let us know what you've brought to us. We'll then review them between now and the next meeting, but in the meantime, we'll hear from the public on their questions. So does that sound good?
Great, thank you.
Excellent. Please introduce yourself and let us know.
For the record, my name is Frederick Geisel. I'm a professional civil engineer working with civil environmental consultants who is a designer for this project. We've made a number of changes since the last hearing date in particular review of the end of 2010, the Brushhill Road residents, whatever commissioned a drainage study to address some of the stormwater issues that were facing them, even before this project came about. And they developed a plan, which we were made aware of well into the project, to basically take care of drainage coming off of the existing roadway network coming down to here and picking up drainage and putting in a proposed long detention basin.
Could you grab the mic and maybe if you can, if you can present?
Stand over the other side.
Yeah, on the other side, so.
Yes.
Thank you.
Basically to put a long detention basin in this area here and one of the sites where we have proposed for the house.
You probably should move that a little bit so the people in the audience can see too.
Okay.
It's not the best setup for a.
It's kind of hard to, yeah.
We have.
Okay. You've got plans.
We have plans.
Tell us what the sheet is you're dealing with.
This sheet, this sheet is number sheet number one, top sheet. This is just the whole area describing the. The whole area. And basically, they have a very long elongated detention basin positioned in this area here. It's kind of running from behind the, I think it's the Brushwood House on this area, kind of perpendicular Brushhill Road, towards the far side where we have a house position. Obviously, this was a, something we had to address or look at, at least review it. And that was pointed out also by the peer reviewer who's doing the stormwater management. So what we've come up with is a plan to accommodate much, probably not all of the stormwater that was proposed to be coming off of here. They also have some other area drainage systems to kind of mitigate some of the runoff from other areas, spot, spot areas. Anyway, what we've come up with is a revised plan to, to try to accommodate as much as we can of the runoff. Basically, to put us in a situation where, from this roadway network that runs around where our new houses are, going up all the way to the other end of the road, the crest of the hill, we would accommodate all of that roadway runoff, all of the runoff from the tennis court that's there and the area around the tennis court, accommodate all that and have an infiltration basin, basically something below grade, so it wouldn't be a detention pond, but it'd be infiltration below the surface, grassed over, and then would be able to absorb the water and slowly percolate it into the ground. It's a fairly extensive area and we'll, I'll show you on some of the other subtle drawings. And what this would accommodate would be, through a 25-year storm, it would be, accommodate the entire runoff with no discharge, zero discharge from a 25-year storm. And then, from a 100-year storm, there'd be a discharge which is equivalent to about 10% of the inflow. So 90% will be totally discharged, but in terms of a rate of discharge, it would be only about 10% of the peak rate you would see during a 100-year storm. So that's very accommodating. There would also be individual infiltration areas for each home. Each one would have an area to infiltrate, the roof runoff and the driveway runoff behind it. So again, there'd be infiltrators, they're below grade, grassed over, it looks like it's part of the lawn. So it would not be a big detention pond sitting there, you know, holding water, which is pretty ugly. This is a, page four is a little less confusing because we left the contours off, but still showed the, the layout of the detention infiltration area. Again, we slid one of the houses a little further away so that wouldn't, so we'd have more area to accommodate the detention infiltration area, but still more than 50 feet away from the corner of property line on one corner. That's the closest spot, 51.7 feet away. So it's reasonably distant. And it basically changed the alignment so it's more aligned with the same, kind of facing more south, accommodated, so similar to the other houses, two other houses. And in these, it got cut off a little bit because we wanted to show, this is a plan and profile, but you can see the very top of the middle house, there you can see part of the infiltrator system behind it. It shows in detail on sheet three, shows that in detail. It shows in detail the contours, et cetera. We tried to match the contours so that they're not extremely different than the existing grades. There's one place where it's basically is fairly steep embankment. It's only about five or six feet in height, but it still is a fairly steep area. And of course, we don't want to have that, our roadway actually comes right into that area. So we cut down a little bit on one side and filled the other side to accommodate. So we don't have extreme changes in grade. We're basically matching what the existing grades are. And again, this takes all of the flow from all the way up the other end of, of the driveway here, the far end where it tees in, all the way down through here to the opposite end. One other, one other thing we did is we, we created a turnaround here. I don't want someone to drive the whole length of the driveway and get to the end and say, where do I go from here? And then having to, you know, have maneuver around in someone's driveway to get there. We created a turnaround so they could just pull in here, I think delivery trucks or things like that, pull in here, back up of the driveway and then, beginning of driveway and then pull down, further down the drive. We've also accommodated, created a little bit of a catchment area, so the water running off of the tennis court and the area around the tennis court would be, could be trapped by the, sort of the bankment here, a little retaining wall, low retaining wall to accommodate the grade change. Anyway, we created a little catchment area there with a catch basin in there, an area drain, so that the water would run down into there and then go into our drainage system and be accommodated by the infiltrators.
Where's the catch basin?
The catch basin is, it's, if you're looking at sheet number three, it's right in the middle of the, there's the 96 contour and the close, closer side to the, to the house, you'll see a little circle with a square inside of it. The drainage information is on the other plan, there was just too much to put on this one plan, but it's right in, maybe I can put it out.
It's right. See, it's right, it's, it's actually with this reduced size, it, it makes it too hard to read.
No, I thought it was.
It's right, it's right, it's right there. Well, that's, I thought that's.
Yeah, that's.
The catch basin was on the tennis court.
No, 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 it's, it's sheet runoff.
All right, okay, I see it.
Yes, so.
See if that.
We'll accommodate that close so that it wouldn't have water, you know, essentially ponding behind there or else spilling over this low retaining wall onto the roadway. This would be collected and then be able to connect right into the infiltrators. At the, outside of the infiltrators, we have a, the overflow in the extreme storms, 100-year storm. The overflow is collected and it's run into a level spreader, which would be just on the downhill side to discharge this along the entire length of it, which is 100 feet plus along that area.
The overflow goes into the 12-inch perforator pipe and then?
12-inch perforator pipe, right. It's, it just basically just discharges on the ground. I mean, it could infiltrate into the ground, but the ground, on 100-year storm, the ground's going to be pretty well saturated in the areas where the infiltrators are pretty well saturated. So this is just taking what can't be accommodated, peak flow, be able to discharge it along that way.
Anything 25-year storm or less, you don't, you don't expect even?
No, even, even to make the overflow, no.
Cheryl, you have a question?
I was just curious if you have a section through that area that you're describing with the retaining wall?
There, it, there isn't, there is a section, wait, I don't know. I had it shows, I didn't, I didn't have a plan that I mounted. But there is a, I don't know if she was planning this on. You did have the section taken through here, right, right through here where the retaining wall is and showing the roadway cross section.
Was that where the dwelling three was?
Is that, is that sheet four where you have the proposed driveway profile?
Actually, I think Emily, sheet five.
Sheet five.
Dwelling three.
Oh, okay.
I didn't have that mounted, but we did have a cross section with the retaining.
I think that's the.
That's the.
Oh, no, it says porch there, maybe, I'm sorry, wrong one.
No, I don't think so.
I think it's wrong one.
There's one right here, it's the center in the sheet number five, the center section. It shows a retaining wall.
Oh, yeah, okay.
It looks extreme because it's, because it's exaggerated scale on the vertical versus the horizontal, but shows the roadway cross section and then there's a wall which is, it sits about, this is.
So the top of the wall is 96?
No, not, I mean 90, 90.
97.
97, I think.
I need my glasses.
The roadway is, use this one.
97, the roadway is now 93. So it's about four feet, at the back, it's about four feet, I think.
Now again, I know we haven't had a chance to really look at this for tonight, so if there's any other sort of easy questions, is that, are those the, those are essentially the changes?
Just to say that we have, we, we met with the owner because we had to make all these changes and it's, it's extreme. This is a multiple of what we'd originally proposed, so it's a, it's a multiple. He gave us a blessing to go ahead, these are permits and there's the, you know, discussions that'll be between him and the, and the sellers, whatever. that'll be between him and the, or the sellers, whatever. What we'd also be able to do is accommodate potentially, if they wanted to extend, expand this, they might be, they'd be able to do that, add some other areas on the other end if they want.
And so you, you'll be, just before we turn it over to public comment, you'll be available at our next, at the meeting that we continue this to, if we have more detailed questions after looking at this.
Oh, yeah, yes, absolutely.
Okay, great, excellent.
This is, this is to be a presentation for informational purposes and certainly don't expect any deliberation, but just to answer any questions you might have.
So if you have any more sort of immediate questions and then.
Yeah, I was just curious, did you already say whether this had gone to the peer review engineer?
No, no, it hasn't, because we have to do is, we're just putting this all together the last few days and have to revise the drainage report, stormwater management report to accommodate this. You know, if something came up tonight that said, oh yeah, we can change that, then I would do that before I submit the report, so we'll take care of those things. So it will be sent shortly, by the first of the week.
Any other immediate questions? All right, so if not, if you'll sit down.
Sure.
And thank you very much. So what we're going to do is we're going to have the public comment period and I'm going to invite people forward, but before I do that, let me read the rules, actually if you'll sit back there.
Sit back, oh yeah, I was gonna put this back here.
So wait to be recognized before speaking, come to the table and give your name and address, speak into the microphone. When you are done, please leave the table. All questions or comments must be directed to the chair. Speakers may not cross-examine applicant, board members, or other speakers. The applicant will be, or in this case, the engineer will be asked to respond to questions at the end of the public input session, so he's responding to all questions at once. So is there anybody who would like to comment or speak on 330 Brush Hill Road, 333, sorry, Brush Hill Road? Yes, please come forward.
My name's Linda Parslow and I live in, on 220 Beacon Street. And originally, my house is the old caretaker's cottage to the big mansion. And as a child, we used to come up through Brush Hill, that was our street address. And we used to come down the long driveway, pass all the barns and the caretakers. So currently, we still have a brook that runs between, I'm almost behind the tennis court. So I, currently, there is a brook that still runs vigorously through the property line, especially in the spring and the fall. So my front, front yard is constantly flooding. The fence is, the new fence that they had put up was put up in the same spot, so it's rotting and tilting, it's leaning. My front lawn, in the wintertime, is like an ice skating rink. In any kind of a heavy rainstorm, it cascades down my front steps and all the brook work is all shot. Also, I have an issue with trees, large trees. Two years ago, one of those large conifers snapped off, hit my house, ripped off the gutters and poked a hole, the tip of the tree poked a hole through the stone and mortared And there's other large ones ready to come over, they've been there since I was a kid, I'm 63 years old, they've been there since I was a kid and they're huge. And there's no maintenance of all these trees hanging over and. So I'm wondering, and I'm going to listen to be, you know, I'm worried about traffic, more flooding.
Could you show where, where you're.
Sure. Where is the tennis court?
Right in the middle, right in the very middle of the, no, no, see, right there?
Right here.
Right over here, yeah.
Oh, okay, so.
Are you in the, right over by the, right by.
I'm.
No.
I'm on Beacon Street.
Yeah, Beacon Street, this is Beacon Street, right there. I'm sorry, just, are you in this place, this here?
Yeah, that must be.
Look at sheet one where it says the Parslow's.
Right here in the, in the corner, you can see everybody, right there.
Right here, okay, okay, okay.
Still don't see it.
Okay, that's, okay.
All right, I see it now.
Sorry?
Okay, we, we found you.
Okay. So I guess I'm very concerned about the lack of maintenance.
Okay.
And the continuing flooding, I mean, that's, I'm happy for the people over there, but I'm still.
So although this man here is just speaking to the drainage tonight.
Okay.
Your comments are part of the total public hearing, so when they come back to do the full presentation, we're, we will take that into account as we ask the questions.
Okay.
But he can.
Yeah, he'll be able to speak to the drainage when he gets to his bit, but as far as the maintenance of the trees, we'll take that back when the applicant comes back to us.
Okay.
So thank you very much.
All right, thank you.
I'm sorry, ma'am, can you point out approximately where you think the brook runs?
Who's the tennis court in? Oh, the tennis court, right across here. It comes down to from where the paper street, there's a paper street that goes in between bike, driver.
And the tennis court?
Yeah.
It kind of falls that street?
Could you, ma'am, could you grab the mic, please?
Emily, I guess I would ask that, could we get the brook located on our existing?
It runs.
Yeah, I think that's a good idea.
Horizontal with the fence behind the property, behind the tennis court.
Okay.
Great, great.
And then it also comes off 207 Beacon Street, you know.
That's Beacon, that's you here.
Yeah.
This, this must run, there's the tennis court there.
Yeah.
Running this way.
Yeah.
Mike, can you show us what you showed her? Can you just show, can you show us what you showed her?
Show, just agreeing that I think this is your referent, it's the paper street that parallels that apparently.
Okay.
The only thing about the runoff, and I'm not undermining your concern, but it seems like this, this whole move development is downhill from here.
So, yeah, I'll take that on a comment. So thank you very much.
Okay.
Appreciate your comments. Does anybody else want to speak to 333 Brush Hill Road? Yes, sir, please come forward.
Are we going to wait for the engineer to address the issue?
Yes, he addresses everything at the end, as per our previous plans. So, sir, if you'll come forward and introduce yourself and let us know where you live and then.
Yes, I'm Paul Basile, representing Nancy Cohen at 275 Brush Hill Road. And our only concern is, has anyone studied or assessed the drainage to 275 Brush Hill Road? An engineer, have they assessed it or come up with a solution, how to stop the erosion and water coming from the street onto private property?
So you're asking public street to private property?
Well, it's coming down Brush Hill Road and it's flooding her front yard and erosion and so forth.
Can you locate?
275 is at the corner of Truman Highway, it's at the very bottom of the hill, on the same side as the condominiums.
So this public hearing is just on 333 Brush Hill Road, it's not on public ways? It's not on, it's not on the publicly owned street? So what we're doing is we're looking at whatever drainage may be caused, or problems may be caused either by existing conditions on this property or by the change of the addition of three houses. It's not addressing anything that's within the town's control, if you see what I mean.
And they're not draining onto the.
If they are, they have to fix that, but if it's, so if the concern, if your concern is, is some of their stuff draining onto Brush Hill Road and then it's draining down, then they would have to control that and that, we definitely need to know that. If it's just, if it's.
That seems to be the case.
Okay, so that's what we need to.
Yeah, the topography here would indicate that this development isn't going to run onto Brush Hill Road, it's going to run back towards Truman Highway beyond where he's talking.
It needs a true engineer to study it.
Sir, could you speak into the microphone, please?
Yeah, you have to speak into the microphone so the camera's pick you up.
It would take an engineer to come up with this correct solution and to analyze what the extent of the problem is.
So we're working, we're in, with 333 Brush Hill Road with this application, you have the engineer who can speak after we have heard all the public comments to what they're able to do, but they can only control the water that's on their site. So anything, you know, if they do everything to control all the water on their site and there's still an issue, then that's beyond what we can talk about here, just a second, Brian. So, yes, Brian.
Can we just ask that the peer review look at that?
Yeah, absolutely.
That will be a.
Yes, ma'am, please come forward.
Hi, thank you. I'd like to thank Paul Basile for representing me and I am Nancy Cohen at 275 Brush Hill Road, Milton. I am the owner of the house on that property and my understanding is, we were invited for a reason. And we are butters.
Yep.
And as I looked at the presentation, I heard a perpendicular presentation, I didn't hear anything parallel to Brush Hill Road. And that's the word I picked up, I kept hearing perpendicular. But if he's a civil engineer, what about a parallel to the property? Because you just said, it's property. You need retaining basins parallel to Brush Hill Road and you also need probably a retaining wall to the property. Has nothing to do with the roadway, as you just said, it has to do with protecting water that is coming off of 333 onto Brush Hill Road, which ultimately affects that woman and myself.
Okay.
Because I've walked the street. So the word I'd like to hear at the next meeting is, what are they doing to the parallel side of the property? And my recommendation is catch basins and retaining walls. Okay?
Okay.
And that addresses the 333 runoff. And then there's two things that I observe. Yeah, there are catch basins, I don't understand that 25-year, 100-year, I don't understand that. But as I watch the water, the catch basins, actually, yeah, they'll absorb the water, but as rain continues to come down, there's no solution. It's like a tsunami that is created that that woman may be affected by with the ice on her front lawn and the trees coming down and the rotten fences, because myself at 275 Brush Hill Road, my poor neighbor at 285 Truman that couldn't come tonight, has the same problem with the totally rotten fence right now that we didn't present in June, that now we have to fix. And it's an end result of the tsunami that comes down the hill. And I appreciate that 333 is going to address some of the problem and I do appreciate that the neighbors have to do what they need to do, but the catch drain basins, be it perpendicular or parallel, will probably maybe solve 50%, but there's going to be continued rain and that, it's not going to do it, sorry. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Yeah.
Does anybody else wish to speak to 333 Brush Hill Road? So if you'd like to come forward and address anything drainage related that you've heard, that would be helpful. And then to Cheryl's point, we'd like the brook added to the existing conditions plan. And Brian, I think your point of having the peer review double-check what's happening to Brush Hill Road from the site is a good one, but if you'd like to address the rest.
Sure, I, I'm not aware of a brook, it may be an intermittent stream type of runoff, basically a swale that affects, because I've been on, along the site a couple times during light rain and I haven't seen the water rushing down in a brook. So it's probably, the paper street that we were describing, which is actually where we're running a water main and connecting into the water system, is cleared land and that would create an avenue for runoff to, to go down. So I think that's, that may be accommodating what's, what's happening there. The situations were described somewhat understandable, it's on Brush Hill Road, we ran an investigation in terms of, gee, could we tie any of our drainage into Brush Hill Road? And looked at the pipes, the sizes of the pipes and locations of catch basins and they are, estimation, at least in the first look, to be somewhat inadequate, you know, to accommodate any more flow and probably not accommodate the existing flows. And therefore, we wouldn't do, we'd be able to do anything. If we were to, let's say, tie anything in there, then we would have to address those, those issues, we'd have to.
I think what we're hoping is that you're going to be containing all of your storm water on site and not.
We are, we are, no, I was gonna say, as alternative, we looked at, can we take any of our storm water off-site?
Right.
And we looked at and said, it doesn't appear to us that it could accommodate the existing flows in there and therefore couldn't accommodate any more. If we, you know, we would certainly investigate a situation where, you know, if we could reduce the size, what we're doing by adding some more drainage or improving the drainage on Brush Hill Road and that would solve other problems, then it's maybe something we could look at.
Well, would it? I mean, you say that the drainage system on Brush Hill Road is inadequate and you're saying that if it were a bigger system, it would drain better. Isn't that what you're saying?
Well, it looks like, we just made a first review, we weren't considering that initially at all, but we were looking at to see whether.
Where does it drain to?
Drains down across Truman Highway into the river, yeah, so.
So I think, I think what, obviously, the town system is sort of beyond your purview here, but I think the concern that we would have is to make sure that everything that you're dealing, you are going to contain all of the storm water that's on your site, on your site.
Right.
And that it's not going to run off into Brush Hill Road, that, you know, that, and that's what we'll be looking from, from the peer review, is, is your system adequate to take care of everything that you have?
Right.
It would seem to me, and just, maybe you can speak further on it, I see the, you know, the grade's going down this way, it's getting down to 80 here, but back here it's like 64, it would seem to me that anything that's coming here is.
Staying within the, within the property and going down towards Truman Highway, yes.
It's going straight back out towards Truman Highway, it ain't even heading towards.
No, it's not heading towards Brush Hill at all.
So maybe just describe, for the, for the people who ask the question, describe the flows on, on the plan and.
Yeah.
Where it's going and higher.
The natural contour to stop.
The natural flow from, basically where it was described here as being some sort of a stream running down this way, we're starting our roadway here and it's going to be a driveway 20-foot wide with Cape Cod burn, one-foot Cape Cod burn on either side, so it contains the storm water within the roadway and therefore we can pick it up when we get to our catch basins. Catch basin is over here, catch basin is over here. That, so any water coming in to the end of our road, the grade goes down this way through here, we would pick it up, accommodate it and take that flow off. So if there was a, a stream there, we will try to go out there and see if we, we locate a stream through, we have a detailed contour maps, you know, one-foot contours of the whole area. So we'll see if we can locate where a stream might be flowing through there. It doesn't, there, there seems to be a little bit of a depression running through here or run down this way, but I will take a closer look at that and see if we can find a stream and I'll do a, a site visit, you know, to see if I can find out where that is and show it. But we would, any flow that come in here, obviously, we're not affecting here, we've got a house which is at about elevation 106 and our, the beginning of our, our project here is around 104, so we're a couple feet lower just to begin with from the lowest part of this property and that's our high point and we're going down from there, so.
Okay. So, and then can you show on the property, so where the water flows are in relation to Brush Hill Road and then how you're capturing any flows that may be close to Brush Hill Road?
Again, it might be helpful to people to understand before you even catch the water, under its natural condition, if you're out there today, where it runs.
Then I have Alex and I have Cheryl with questions.
Okay, the water runs basically down this way through the property, you know, the general flow of contour.
Yeah, or, orients, orients the people who can't see the detail.
This is, this is Brush Hill Road over here, this is Beacon Street coming in here.
Yeah.
Okay, Smith Road, Truman Highway is down over here. And the, the general flow is, is basically through this, this way, actually curving in a little bit toward the middle of the property and heading almost in a northerly direction. So we're, we're collecting, everything that's coming in here from the tennis court and this area here, it'll be flowed down, this, this area, and we're going to collect that and bring it to our detention area. Everything, roadways here. roadways here is going to be collected all the way from the roadway coming all the way up down here, we collect it and brought into our storm infiltrators. Each of the houses, they basically would sit downhill off of the driveway we're positioning there. And they would have, from their driveways and their roof worn off, infiltrators behind each house. A series of infiltrators.
No, I've got other people. So as I read before, we have the public comments, then we have the response. I've got a couple of questions from the board, and then we're going to be moving to...
We still have, you know, we've still got a number of other people to discuss. I mean, he hasn't discussed the parcels yet.
Right. You're next with the questions, Alex. And then Cheryl.
About Brush Hill Road and the drainage there. Because if it were adequate drainage, you could presumably use it. And that would be helpful, because that's what you looked at. And you're saying that it's not adequate. And it seems to me that since you've looked at it and feel that it's not adequate, you might as well say so, so that the people who are getting impacted by this inadequate system at least have an engineer who said that the system is inadequate.
Well, I say it's inadequate because when we checked on the size of the pipes, they were smaller than the minimum size you would currently use on a system.
Yeah, well, you can say that.
Many years ago, that's basically what we had. And, you know, I don't know, we haven't taken it any further. We've just looked at that and accommodated. You know, if we found out that there was a 24, 36-inch pipe on the road, we said, well, it's got, that's lots of room. You know, we can probably put some of our overflow into that. But it doesn't appear to be a way.
But the people on Brush Hill Road, one of their complaints is drainage. And it would seem to me that one of their complaints should have to do with the drainage system in the street, as opposed to you.
Yes, I would agree with you. We were not, we will, we will not impact the drainage on Brush Hill Road at all by our proposed system.
One that's in there, okay. Cheryl, you had a question?
Yes. When you, when you described that you, the contours were going to pretty closely, be pretty close to what they are now. And in looking at the aerial, it seems like there's a lot of trees in this general area.
There are a lot of trees, yes.
So I guess, first of all, because then to do the regrading, will it require the trees to be removed? And is that necessary? Because then you're going to probably generate additional runoff when you remove the trees. So can you at least preserve trees in between the houses so as to minimize that additional runoff?
I think that's the, that's the plan. The trees would provide, you know, again, additional absorption of rainwater and also screening between the houses.
So then can you mark on your plans where your limit of cut would be, which would not therefore impact the trees? So I'd like to see if where you're showing now, new contours between the houses, if you're going to be removing all the trees in between the houses?
Let me, we'll see.
We need to look at that.
I'll take a look at that, yes. Yes.
Any other questions from board members tonight? Now, usually what, as I said before, usually what happens is we have the public comment. All of the public comments come through.
They're going to discuss the parcels.
Can I, can I finish?
Okay.
Thank you. All of the public comment happens, and then the applicant, the applicant or in this case, engineer responds to all the public comment at once. You had your hand up, so I'll allow it this once, because I want to make sure you have your questions answered. So, yes, sir. Come forward and speak into the mic. And you can stay there because I suspect you'll be answering your questions. So...
Just one question.
Yeah, into the mic, please, so the cameras can pick you up.
Do the condominiums currently drain onto Brush Hill Road? Because there's a PVC pipe that comes through the Roxbury pudding stone along Brush Hill Road for drainage. Are they currently draining their water onto Brush Hill Road at this time?
I don't know.
You can answer that, yeah. Okay.
Yeah.
So then that's a question that we would have to have answered at the next meeting when the applicant is actually here. Thank you.
Which of these, this would be the condominiums, which are, just to make sure I understand, these are all basically condominiums. But I think we have got condominiums. That's down, Truman Highway is down over here, at the top of the ship.
The Roxbury pudding stone wall runs along Brush Hill on this side, mounted 275. It's the same wall, continues all the way down. And through the wall, it runs along Brush Hill Road, there's a PVC pipe that cuts fluid, it drains water from the condominium site onto Brush Hill Road.
Okay. I'm not aware of that, but I will, I'll check into it, yes.
Alex, you had another question.
Would you, would you discuss the parcels issues?
So this was the brook which we've talked about. He can't really talk about the fence and the trees because he's here to discuss drainage. So we'll have to take those up in the next one.
She had a drainage issue. That's why perhaps doing it as the issues arise might be a better way to do it, because you forget.
I don't forget. I was walking through them. So she did have a drainage question. The issue of the brook and also the flooding back up onto her lawn, the ice rink in the winter. So if you could address those.
Sure. Yeah, we'll take a look at that and see where we can accommodate. And if there's, you know, certainly any way we could relieve any of that drainage pressure, you know, pick it up, we would certainly try to do that.
Okay, fantastic. So you have a little...
I just, you're downhill on that side.
Right. So that, I mean, if there's some way we could relieve some of the flooding or ponding or something like that.
Maybe there's some sort of backup that's occurring.
Right. And then connect it down to where we're doing work.
You commented that if you brought something off the end of your road just to pick up some drainage, take it into your system.
Exactly. We'll see if we can do that.
Okay, great. Excellent. Anything else for, from members tonight? Again, we'll need to have the opportunity to review these in more detail. So Tim, what do we have for the 27th of August?
Literally didn't even print one out.
Okay. So I don't think I've got anything on mine either. So let's do it for, we'll continue this public hearing to the 27th of August at 7:15 PM. And if you have any materials to come before the board, please put them in the Thursday before.
Oh, at least.
And Tim, you're going to coordinate the peer review?
Yeah. Fred, I will, I will look out for electronic copies of these, a fuller, full storm order report beginning of next week. And then we can, we can get that along to the peer review for her, for her checkup.
Okay, great. And I will address all the questions that she raised. The rest of my work.
Wonderful. Thanks.
Thank you very much. So we have a few minutes before our next hearing starts at 8 o'clock. So why don't we jump to the forums? Actually, let's jump to the main schedule for articles. And you should have received this in your packet, but I'll walk you through it. So obviously, the first draft of the articles is due today. I think you all got them in. Yep. And the top five topics were due today, and some of them are slightly late. But we're going to talk about those in more detail when we get to the public forum. So what's happening is that, Tim, while, while we're doing the public forums in our regular meetings, there's also a process of things going on the website and public comments periods on the website. So Tim is adding all of those drafts to the planning board website so that people can comment on them. And we're setting up a way of creating public comment input. Our second public forum is obviously Tuesday. And after the next public hearing, we'll discuss that in more detail. The warrant opens on August 4th. And obviously, we won't have had final language at that point. And as we discuss both the town meeting and going into this process, this is a very tight timeline for us. And it's something new. The planning board hasn't done it quite this way before. So I have met with both the warrant committee and the board of selection, asking them to be flexible in the deadlines. And the idea would be that we would submit what we have on August 4th, but that at a later date, we would be allowed to change the zoning language to the final language that would go into the warrant as an article. And that we would be able to withdraw any articles we don't come forward, we don't feel comfortable going forward with. And they have all agreed that they're willing to be flexible. So what we're going to do is, on August 3rd, Tim will submit what he has from us to the board of selection to go on the warrant for August 4th. Both the visual survey and the comments on draft one will be closed on August 11th. And all of the results will be sent to us for our review. The draft, our second draft will be due August 17th. And we'll have the third public forum on either the 17th or the 19th, depending on everybody's schedules. Regularly scheduled meetings of August 13th and 27th, we'll be discussing these and making our cuts as to what we don't think will go forward. We can, in fact, do a first cut either tonight. I mean, I know one of my articles is not going forward. I'm still going to talk about it because I'd like to get public input and get people thinking about it. But I know it's not going forward for town meeting. So if anybody else has an article that they know is not going forward for town meeting, then we can go ahead and discuss that tonight. September 1st or 2nd, depending on when we have the forum, comments on draft two will close and will send to board members. We need to have our public hearing on September 11th and our final vote on the articles, which since they've gone through several iterations, should it be an issue? And then Tim and I will get any last changes on September 11th done and out to the warrant committee for their final review on September 14th. And those will be the articles that go into the warrant. I will, in the meantime, be meeting with the warrant committee throughout to keep them updated on where we are and where the articles are, which means we'll be done with our zoning initiative the 11th of September. So there is light at the end of the tunnel. I know it's been a lot of work for everybody. So that's where we are. Yes, quick question, then we'll open the public hearing and then come back to this. Yes?
Are we going to be discussing the language of the articles amongst ourselves somewhere in the schedule?
We can do it the 28th. We'd also, we all talked about having a short meeting at the end of that. But we will be talking about it August 13th, August 27th, and September 11th. We can also submit comments to, on each other's articles to Tim to, for distribution. Obviously, we can't go back and forth with each other, but we can submit them for distribution. So why don't we hold any other questions, and we'll run through it again, and we'll start this public hearing. So we are continuing a public hearing on a preliminary subdivision application for 41 Pleasant Street. Now, a preliminary subdivision application doesn't require a public hearing, but we're treating it as such. And I'm going to, once again, go through the process. So we'll have a report from Tim on outstanding items, update from the applicant, questions from board members, and testimony from members of the public. And when we get to that point, I will remind the public what the rules are for that. And then we will ID the outstanding items for our next meeting if there is one. So, Tim, quick update from you?
So we have since the last meeting received, and you should have at least an 11 by 17 of a new plan with, among other things, the altered angle of the roadway hitting Pleasant Street. Here's a big one. I'll just toss this out for people to look at. As well as an updated narrative you guys submitted, right? So addressing...
That should have been in your packet.
I've got, yeah.
Sorry, Tim, go ahead.
Yeah. So did you all not get the narrative and the...
It was in our packet.
Mike put his, all right.
I just did not get it.
Talk to Tim afterwards.
Cheryl, did you not get anything? Okay.
I'll look over Brian Children. All right. So Paul, you want to take it on from there?
Sure. Good evening. My name is Paul Sullivan from Smith Road in Milton. And Rob Silverdy, he's the developer of this project at 33 and 41 Pleasant Street. As Tim had mentioned, we made some modifications to the plan after we got some feedback at the previous public hearing. And one of the major changes was to angle the road so it would be at a right angle to Pleasant Street, which added a little bit of a curve to the road, right? And the applicant has decided to install vertical granite curbing to eliminate that issue too. So we had gone back and forth a little bit about Cape Cod burn or not and whether we'd hold up with the plows and stuff. So he's determined he'll install vertical granite curbing. Some other issues, trees we located on the plans, second page, a lot more trees are located. We still haven't determined exactly which trees will be removed and which will remain. We're still working on that. We also, I went before the conservation commission head up, an informal discussion regarding the easement and the fact that it clips the edge of the 100-foot no disturb. They obviously, we're generally open to the idea. I explained to him that the DPW director, Director Lynch, had requested the water main be brought there because apparently the animal shelter is going to go on the town property back there. And the town is anticipating bringing up a new water main up the access road. And he wanted to loop it together to create proper flow. So the commission, it wasn't a formal application, so they'd only say so much. But, you know, they seemed open to it, although they might require some changes. We told them if the plan remains as it is right now, we'd file an NOI with them, a notice of intent. And then we also, the applicant has decided it will be a private way and have a homeowners association will be formed to manage and maintain the common areas of the development. The other topic conversation from the previous meeting was the, whether these lots were good and the size of lots. So we did some research on that, and I did a couple comparisons. I compared the first three lots on the right side of Quarry Lane. One of them has a Pleasant Street address, but I included that as three lots. It has frontage of both streets. To the first three lots on the left side of this development. And as you can see, the, they're pretty comparable. Actually, you know, the new developments lots are slightly larger and have more frontage. And then I also compiled a list of lots in the neighborhood that were under 10,000 square feet. And there's a list in the narrative of quite a few homes and lots that range from a low of 5,400 square feet up to 9,800. And I also included the frontage for those as well. We did, also did an analysis on a couple of lots as far as lot coverage, gross floor area, and open space. And we covered the issue of elevations regarding lot one and lot eight. The garages are going to be on, inside of the development. And that end will be treated as carefully architecturally as the front of the houses. And then we added screening. The applicant added screening pretty much along the entire bunting properties on both sides. You know, six-foot abrevieties or whatever. Discuss it with the neighbors and see what they want. Some might prefer fences versus that. But, you know, we'd obviously discuss that with them. And that's it. And we included some more information for lot nine in the right-of-way. And it's, we've done some research. There was some title work done on that 33-foot right-of-way by a firm. And then I took that information and we gave it to Matthew Gaines, who's an attorney in zoning. He's a real estate and zoning attorney for a firm out of Braintree. And it was his view, and I could submit a zoning letter from him, that lot nine, the owner of the Neal property basically has rights to the 33-foot access and also right to improve it. So it probably as part of the definitive application, we'll submit that. So it, probably as part of the definitive application, we'll submit that zoning information. And I think that covers most of what we discussed.
Any questions from board members?
I haven't had a chance to review the plan, because I've just seen it now.
Did you not get your packet?
Did you not get your packet on Friday?
It's attached.
Not sure enough I have. Okay, I guess my question is, is your right-angle intersection long enough?
Before the curve, you mean?
Before the curve, before it hits the curve.
Long enough for a car? Is that your question?
For a fire engine?
Long enough to comply with the law.
Yeah. You've got it at a right angle, but then you've got this immediate curve, so have you looked at the length?
Does the bylaw specify that it has to be straight for 15 feet?
That's the question. I mean, the question is whether, what the, what the, what the standards are.
I think there, it doesn't specify how long that right angle is, sorry, at least we couldn't find it. I read through all the rules and regs in zoning, and, but it, there is some reference to a curve, and the angle of a curve, I think. So whether that comes into play or not in this situation, I'm not sure. But there, it doesn't seem to specify that you have to carry that right angle for a certain distance.
You, Paul, you'll be checking it with the fire chief as well?
Sure.
Just to make sure that the fire engines don't have an issue with that, either entering or exiting.
Yes.
I shouldn't think it'd be a problem exiting, but, you know.
I don't, I don't necessarily have a problem with this here, but I, you know, it's kind of a useless bylaw if it doesn't specify that the 90 degrees has to be for a certain distance, otherwise you could say the first two inches is 90 degrees.
So we'll find out what the requirements are.
Yeah, we carried it for 60 feet, but we couldn't find any specific area, and the rules and regs or zoning, or how long you're supposed to carry it for.
Other questions? If not, what I'll do is I'll open it up for public comment, and then we'll come back to the board for more questions afterwards, so.
Emily, I think it asks for the, the buildable area, right? Which is, I think it's on sheet one, right?
Looks like it's, uh-
But I don't know that it's labeled such.
Did you look at his page three in his narrative? I mean, he didn't, he didn't do all the lots, but it looks like he did.
No, I think she was looking for the envelope, the buildable envelope.
The envelope, yeah.
Yeah, I think it's, it looks like to me that it's sketched in on the sheet one, but it, you're right, it's not labeled. I'm assuming the long dotted lines.
It is, yes, those dotted lines in sheet one are, is the building envelope, yes.
Could you label that?
Sure.
Just for the record. Actually, it says building envelope tip on lot three now, I see it.
I just see it, so, okay. Anything else? Alright, so if you guys will-
Sorry, since I didn't see that chart. Does the chart say what the square footage of buildable area is, so we know what the footprint area of that is per lot in your chart?
I think a lot coverage, it's determined by the lot itself and not the, not the building envelope, at least my reading of it. And I just took two, two lots, I took a B lot in zone, that's in zone B, and a lot in zone C. And I just, I mean, these houses are theoretically anyways, they're not set in stone. We just took, we showed a footprint so the neighbors could get a sense of the, but from what I read through the zoning, that the coverage, the formula that I had put there is based on the entire lot. There's a certain percentage, and it's the greater of the two. It's either, it's 20% on, it's, on B it was, I don't have it actually in front of me, I printed out the old, but-
Get it in, sir.
It offered, you could have, it's a graded two, so it was like 3,350 square feet or 30%, I believe, and the 30% or the 20% is significantly larger than that.
Yeah, you have in residence B, 20% under lot coverage, 40% under gross floor area, and in C you've got 30% under lot coverage and 50% under gross floor area.
Right, because if you do the calculations-
And then the open space.
The percentage is much lot, gives you much more square footage.
Yep.
Then these, these house dimensions use, like, say, theoretical?
Well, they're specifically on the plans, those footprints, yep. I used the, it's a house actually I built in town, yep.
So when, so when you did this, the 18, 18,000 is the square foot, the square foot footprint of the house that's going on?
Yes, it's, it's the footprint that's on lot four right now, yes. And it's, it's about as large a house as we'd build in there anyways, you know.
It's the same size as the house you're building on lot one in residence C area?
Yeah, we just took a footprint of, I just had an as-built of a foundation, so we just plotted that out just to give people a sense of the lots. Doesn't mean the width of the houses will be as wide as that, you know, I don't think they'll all be the same, so, some of them will be narrow.
Any other questions? Alright, so if you guys will sit back, we'll have public comment, and then board members, if you have questions after the public comment. So the reminder for the public testimony, wait to be recognized before speaking. Come to the table and give your name and address. Speak into the microphone. When you're done, please leave the table. All questions or comments must be directed to the chair. Speakers may not cross-examine applicant, board members, or other speakers. Applicant will be asked to respond to questions at the end of the public entrance section. So, does anybody wish to come forward? Yes, ma'am, please come forward.
Hello, Catherine Pazwell, 53 Pleasant Street. Just a couple of questions, because I'm just seeing this for the first time. I just wanted to know how long it goes at that right angle before it meets curve? I think they, I couldn't tell if it's at 60 feet or what that was, and I just was curious as to how that affected the lot sizes, assuming it came out of some of those lots. And then, I'm kind of new at this, so just for my own curiosity, for like surveying, we're one of the primary abutters, I'm just curious as to, you know, where the property line falls and how that'll affect what trees stay and go, and so forth.
Alright, so we will ask fellow board-
Thank you.
Person, please come forward.
Ryan Walsh, 56 Pleasant Street. Good evening. I guess the first question I had is, will we, you know, as the neighbors, were we able to get copies of these?
Brian, to, to me and then Paul.
I'm sorry, thank you. Were we able to get copies of the plans, you know, with, with the changes here? And was wondering if, I really, I guess it's the same question as was the previous speaker, what did it do to the lot sizes? It just casual look at it, doesn't look like it changed them much, but I didn't hear a dress that said, hey, they went from 8,000 to 9,000 on the reverse. So that's, that would be a question. And I guess a question for the board, so what would the process be? This is still preliminary. Would that close tonight, and what would the next steps be?
So, I'll answer that. It will depend if they feel that there's something else that they want to bring back to us before they move into the, the actual application. We might let it go another night if they're happy that they've heard as much as they wa, as they need before submitting a formal application, then we could close this tonight. So, we'll chat with them afterwards.
And you'll address the, can we get copies?
Yes, I'll get a-
Mr. Walsh, you can hand these out to all your friends.
And in fact, Tim, are we planning on putting these on the website?
Oh, yeah.
Will we have the ability to do that?
We can put them on the website. I hadn't, I hadn't planned on doing that, but if you'd like, I can do that.
Okay, that'd be great. Alright, anybody else who has questions for this? Alright, if not, if you guys will come back up, we'll have, have you address these questions. So, first one, how long before that right angle meets the curve? So how long is that? How did that affect lot sizes? And the property line and where, how that affects what trees stay and go? Where does the property line fall in relation to the trees that you're looking at?
To answer the first question, it's 60 feet. Do we carry the right angle through? The second question, lot one actually got larger, so the lot, lot two actually got a little bit larger, and yet, and lot eight got a little bit smaller. It wasn't a huge difference, but there was some change on-
Paul, can you grab the mic?
Sure.
Third question was, where the property line falls in relation to which trees stay and go?
Okay.
And I know you're still working on some of that, but you may be able to-
Yeah, we have, we have all the, the trees, just about all of them, on, on page two. So, we did ask out some of the trees that were in obvious places in the road, touching the houses, basically. This was that area that we're going to regrade that we discussed with you. So we're going to remove those trees, and you had mentioned that in mind. These are all the, the new screen that we're going to plant here, all the way to the, both the abutters property line. And it shows some of the trees in lot four that are going to be removed, some of them right in the house, some of them in the front yard, some of them directly abutting the ledge. It looks like ledge four is the only lot that has any significant ledge on it. And then obviously, there's no, no tree removals in, in the 100-foot no disturb, and in the backyard of lot six, the trees will remain, some of the ones in the front yard of lot seven. And same in lot three and lot two, there'll be some trees will remain. There's a very large pine tree there that, I think that's going to be in the building envelope of the house, and that'll probably get removed.
So then, Paul, I think you're, the next question is, where do you guys want to go from here?
Just, um-
Yeah.
The-
I'm sorry, Mike, thank you for the reminder. Board questions first, then we're going to ask you that.
Again, I don't know so much of what the concern is, but on your survey line, you've got zero plus zero zero in the middle of Pleasant Street, and you've got point of curvature at zero plus 45. So from the center of Pleasant Street to the curve, it's 45. Again, I don't know what the bylaw states, to be honest with you. From the property line to the point of curvature, it scales probably, I don't know, 24 feet or something like that. But you, you proved it as a 60 feet because you've got zero plus zero zero and point of curvature at zero plus 45.
So it scales what?
Well, I forget about the scale. Again, if you look at drawing three, oh, I'm sorry, two of three, you've got zero plus zero zero in the middle of Pleasant Street, and you've got zero plus 45 at point of curvature. So you've only got a 45-foot straight line, even from the center of Pleasant Street. Now, from the property line to the point of curvature, like I said, I don't know what that scales, I think it was 20, 20-something feet, maybe.
Yeah, still, it's inch to 40.
I'm sorry, it's probably, yeah, probably about 29 feet, maybe, something like that, 28, 29 feet on the property line to the point of curvature. But again, even from the center of Pleasant Street, it's 45 feet because you had zero to zero plus 45. So I just, you know, it's not 60 feet. I mean, your drawing tells me it's not 60 feet.
That might be a detail once you revise it to blow off and make it very clear.
One thing I think we need to do is find out what, what the requirement is, and again, it'd be hard to believe that there's no requirement, because pointless, I think.
Yeah, we'll, we'll blow that up and add that to the plans.
Okay, that'd be good.
Yeah, the engineer tried to look it up, and he came up with the same conclusion that he couldn't find it. He looked through the bylaws, and it said that, you know, it has to be at a right angle, but there's no actual distance.
No, no, and I'm not trying to be overly confrontational because I don't know how significant it is, but it's not 60 feet.
The 60 foot is for where, the way he's saying the 60 feet, it's basically from where it curves back to the original point.
Yeah, you're looking-
At station, I don't follow it, but- At the property line between lot one and two, that's what he's saying, that's the 60 feet.
It's 60, I mean, the point, the 90 degrees is off the other street, right?
Your right index finger to the edge of the road.
From the center of this road-
Yep, to the right.
To the point of the curvature is 45 feet.
Yep, and then, yep.
What, are you including the rest of the, over here?
No, the other way.
Up here?
Right, to the right side of that.
To the right here?
Yeah, to the property line.
From, from the center of the line to the property line is probably 20 feet.
The property line between one and two, lot one and two.
Property line between, but the road, the road curves before you get to the property line between one and two.
It straightens out, then it curves, yeah.
No, no.
We'll, we'll blow that up so you have a better idea.
You don't have to blow it up. Your surveyor told me, this is zero plus zero zero, and the point of curvature, meaning when he gets off straight line, is at 45, at zero plus 45. So he's telling me it goes straight from zero plus zero zero to zero plus 45, then it hits a point of curvature, which means it curves. So there's, there's nothing to blow up, a look or see a different. Your plan is telling me that it only goes straight for 45 feet from the center of Pleasant Street.
Right, because he, right, so we need to know, we need a clarification of what, what the straightness has to be, if anything.
Any other questions? So, Paul, how do you want to, how do you want to proceed on this? What have been your thoughts?
Well, the engineer's been working on the stormwater calculations-
Yep.
And the plan for that, so they're, they say a week, but, you know, a week turns into two or three, but I, you know, I think it'll be ready in 10 days, if, if submitted two weeks at the latest, so.
So, if you came back to us on the 27th?
Yeah.
I mean, do you want to keep this open and come back to us with the stormwater? Or are you thinking you want this closed and you're just going to come back with the final? How do you want to do, do you want our, our thoughts on the stormwater before you submit the final, or the, the formal application?
Well, we wouldn't get on to the second meeting in August, right?
You can get on to the second meeting in August, yeah. Can't get on to the first.
You want to submit definitive, or you want to?
No, we can submit the definitive.
I think we, so, the lead time on submitting a definitive for the public hearing is two, three weeks, or?
It's going to be advertised in two consecutive weeks before the meeting, so.
So it's almost three weeks to get that done, right? So the meetings on the 27th?
27th, yeah.
I, I think we'd probably like to go and submit the definitive for that hearing.
So close out this public hearing?
Sure.
Any board members have anything else they want before the, want to talk about before they, we close out this public hearing and they move to the definitive? If not, will you have another meeting with the neighbors before you file the definitive?
Yes.
Okay, that'd be great.
Yeah, especially with the stormwater information, I'm sure.
That would be excellent, yeah. We'd love them to see that before you come in front of us.
Sure.
Alright, in that case, hearing note, objections, I'd accept a motion to close this public hearing on the preliminary subdivision. Grab a second?
Second.
Paul in favor?
Aye.
Alright, great, thank you all very much.
Thank you.
We look forward to seeing the definitive.
People are, I was going to say, people are already leaving, but I mean, maybe explaining how the subdivision process works, just like what definitive means.
Let's leave that for another night, since they are actually already leaving. We probably should have done that at the beginning so we could explain where we're, so. So, schedule for the articles. So that's, I mean, the, the, just to review, we have the, our regularly scheduled meetings on the 13th and the 27th, and we're going to have this as an agenda item on both of them. Tim, when you do the posting for the 28th, can you add a piece at the end that the planning board will do an initial discussion? You can revise the posting if it's already posted.
It is already posted.
Okay, so if you revise, we talked about that at the last meeting, and I forgot to put it on the draft agenda. So in answer, I think, to your question right before we moved on to the other, Cheryl, we'll be discussing it at the end of the 28th, on the 13th, the 27th, and obviously 11th as well. So, I know for a fact that I will not be bringing the, the institutional review forward for October. I'm still going to test it at the public forum, but it's proving to be very complex, as I think Alex would have predicted. So I think that's going to be in May or our next October. If anybody else knows either tonight or as of the public forum on the 28th, other articles that they know they won't be bringing forward, I still want to test them because it keeps people talking and thinking about them, but we'll know that we're not going to do that. So, so as I said, both the warrant committee and the Board of Selectmen were willing to be very flexible with us on this. I want to go through the public forum agenda. I want to go through the public forum agenda, so it'll be introductions of what we're doing, which will be relatively brief from me. Tim, I have me doing the results of the June workshop, but if you'd be interested in doing that, that would be, and the survey, if, that would be great if you would like to do that, so.
I could do that. What I, because the, the survey won't technically be closed until, I mean, I mean, we, I forget when we said we wanted to close it, but.
August 11th, yeah.
What I, what I wanted to do was to at least sort of present what the, kind of, you know, so there's 10 pictures of condos, what the top three condos were.
Right, just, you know, this is what we've heard so far.
Bottom three least favorite ones were, just so people sort of have an idea of like where we stand, and you know, because it is visual, you know, we can, we can do it that way. And then, you know, the questions, I'll visualize those somehow.
Yeah. Yeah, and just, you know, just a general, general thought. Tim's done something which is really extremely clever, and we're going to do it at the other forums, which is, the people who signed in, those of them who gave their addresses, he plotted on Google Earth to see, are we getting a distribution across Milton? And so he zoomed out, far enough out so that we're not showing anybody's particular address, so you know, there's no privacy issues. But what we were talking about doing, it is doing that as a different color for each forum, so we can continue to measure how we're reaching people, or where we're reaching people. Also, Tim has been to the farmer's market to talk to people about this and just get an idea of how to best reach people. And Julia's going to go to the Milton Public Library. They each have a little survey that they're taking, so we're checking on that. Brian, you had a question, yeah? And it's a rough life, I tell you.
So I, I sort of, I know how we spread the word for the first one, and then we did some different methods for the second one. It's all sort of, it's not very scientific, but I, you know, we can sort of, I think, begin to discern what are the most, and, and the survey actually also does this, where you can look, and you can look at the certain dates, and like, we got 130 responses on this date when it got posted to Milton neighbors, and we got 30 on this date when I posted on the town website. So it's sort of, you can, I'm trying to figure out ways to systematically do that for our, you know, other forums, short of having people like RSVP and like, say like, oh, I heard about it from this.
Right.
Which we, I mean, we can do that to an extent, but just trying to really pin down, you know, where people are coming from, how they're hearing about it, and what we can do to sort of.
And we're building a database of people who respond and.
Yeah.
Give us their email addresses so that we can contact people who are interested in this directly, so going forward.
And the board can continue to talk about how to, I mean, I've just been using it. I sent out one message, just basically advertising this next forum and telling people to do the survey again, but we can try to figure out different ways to kind of keep people engaged.
Cheryl.
As we get closer to the school year starting again, to get into the superintendent's email blast?
Yes, although I have had mixed reviews on that during the master plan. Some people found it and saw it there, and some people said, oh, but it was way down at the bottom and I had to read the whole thing. But I agree, I think it's very valuable, so, and it's just one more.
Okay, and then the other suggestion is to post flyers at the library and at the senior center, because there's a population that's not on social media as much.
Good, good move, yeah.
So, you know, maybe we'll catch that population there. I know we held the first one at Fuller Village, which is good for that age bracket maybe, but I think those two other locations would be good as well.
So, yes, and then I want to finish the agenda so we all know what we're doing on Tuesday.
But to the point of the agenda, you know, the other few things I would love to see us do, and maybe, maybe the first one's been done, but neighborhood associations, distribution of the presidents, and have them circulated out to the neighborhoods.
So I would encourage any neighborhood association people that are watching on TV right now to submit their contact information to the selectman's office. I did, I did submit both, for both forums. Some associations have a contact with email, some just have a mailing address. I got a lot of return to senders on those, so that list is not as up to date as it could be. So if you, and if any of you are in neighborhood associations, just make sure that you, you have the selectman's ear on that, because we'll use that and, yeah, that's just.
I actually think they just posted the, posted the list to Milton neighbors too.
Oh.
I live in Milton, so I don't know if I'm on.
I will try to find it for you.
That'd be good.
Sorry, one more?
Yes, one more.
I'd love to get, I'd love to have people around the table think of ambassadors, to have them push to, push to their Facebook pages.
Oh, that's a great idea, yeah.
I won't name any names on television, but I have a few that I can think of, and I'm sure that if we think about the people who stand up at town meeting and suggest that they weren't well-informed, those might be some of the best ambassadors we can target.
Also, if anybody has personal email lists, sending out a reminder this weekend would be a good idea. So obviously, to people on your personal email list who live in Milton, because I suspect other towns won't be, won't be as interested, but that's a good point. So after Tim's done a quick presentation of the results of the June workshop and survey, as far as we've gotten, we're going to each have about 10 minutes to present the critical topics for our various zoning pieces. And so, it's the top five, as I said in the draft, the top five permissions, restrictions, or conditions that you're putting on here that you want public input on. Alex will go first, then Brian, then Cheryl, then I'll wrap it up and move it into the breakout sessions. We're going to do two breakout sessions, and it's not on this list, but each of us will run the breakout session as on the list. So Alex will do his on condominiums, great estates. Brian, you're going to do, start off with the non-conforming businesses, because I don't want the two condominiums during the same breakout session. Cheryl, you'll start with accessory dwelling units. I'll do signs and lighting. Then we'll move straight into the second breakout. Alex, you'll do amplified music for non-conforming dimensions. Brian, you'll do condominiums. I'll do, Cheryl, you do inclusionary zoning, and I'll do bed and breakfast and institutional The rest are going to be assigned, so Alex, Tim is going to help you with taking notes while you run the session. Brian, Mike's going to help you. Cheryl, Bill's going to help you, and Julia, you will be helping me. So the helpers, while you're basically encouraging people to talk about, and the sessions are based on your five topics, so the, the things that you introduce to the whole crowd is what you're going to be discussing in your forum. So, for me, for signs, I'll probably be talking about certain sign types. I'll be talking about how signs are lit, because we know that's a critical issue, and then a couple of other things related to signs, because I haven't done my top five topics yet either, Cheryl, you're not the only one. So think about those technical pieces that go into the zoning. And then we'll do a wrap-up, next steps, and thank you, and then I think we can probably sit down and in 15 or 20 minutes afterwards, just go through and say, yes, these are, these are still out there and I think they may or may not be ready to go, but this one is definitely not ready to go. As I said, institutional review, I know is not going, but I still want to test it because I want to get people's ideas, so we can do a first crack then. And then, Tim will put whatever we agree is going forward, at least for now, on to the Board of Selectmen for the warrant. And then, as I said, September 11th, we'll make that final. We may make some intermediate cuts, we certainly can do, but September 11th, we'll have the public hearing and the final cuts. So, yes.
So, several of us are not lawyers.
Yes.
What is the review process going to be for the language from a legal standpoint? You know, this is becoming zoning law, and will it be tested against the right standards?
John Flynn is on vacation right now, but I will check with him after that, what, when he gets back. At least last I checked, he was on vacation. I may be, I may be a week or so off. I will check and see how he wants to handle that and talk about it with him.
And then, on a similar vein, ma'am?
Yeah.
Inclusionary zoning is included in some language, you know, throughout the zoning code?
Yeah.
There's some language about accessory dwelling units in.
Yeah.
So, I would think that it might be best to have those now be sort of separate sections instead of sort of dispersed, but how that actually, you know, do you delete something and add something kind of to make it something rather than, you know, here's this language? How do we make it into something which, to Brian's point, becomes a modified bylaw?
So, if you take, let's take the sign, for example. So if you look at my draft of the sign language at the moment, it is not set up as an article yet. It is set up as everything but the beginning part, and there's one piece missing, which is, I wrote and, or drafted with the help of Wellesley, Concord, a little bit of Norwood, a very tiny bit of Hingham, and some definitions from Arlington, a draft zoning bylaw. In other words, I copied and pasted quite a bit, and then I put in our own process. I'd like to thank those communities, especially Wellesley, which has a great one. But at any rate, it's the draft bylaw, but it doesn't have the bit where I completely strip out the Milton part. So that still has to get formalized. So I would say, if you're planning on modify, I would come up with the language first, but if you're planning on modifying, that's one thing. If you're planning on stripping it out completely, and then we can go through and add the bit where we figure out which sections we're going to delete or how we want to modify. But for now, just focus on the solid language, and then after this round, we'll talk about how to put it in proper format for the warrant. So, questions? Questions? Okay. You're good with what you're going to do? You're going to give me your five topics? Tim's going to have all the materials. Ned, I know, wanted to talk to one of the articles, at least you had mentioned that. I don't know if you want to still talk to one of the articles. If so, you're welcome to come forward, since we're discussing zoning articles.
Actually, yes. I'm very interested in the draft of the non-conforming business use overlay proposal. I know I drafted one and shared my draft with, earlier with Alex and recently with Brian, and I know Brian's reworked some of it. I'm, have several very interested property owners who want to move forward on that, and so I'm anxious to see that the board will advance that bylaw on its own merit. If it doesn't, then I will be presenting a ten citizens article that will essentially get it to the same point. So, I think it's important that that article get to town meeting, and it's important enough where I'm preparing to advance it if it has to be.
Yeah, Brian?
Have you seen, you probably have not seen my changes since I submitted them at 8 o'clock this morning.
I did get a, I did get an email from Tim with a copy, I haven't.
I appreciate feedback, if possible, prior to the session on Tues, Monday, Tuesday, whatever.
Tuesday, yeah.
Yeah, I will, I will work to get something back to you.
And I did base some of it on what you sent to me, so I'm happy to talk about it.
That'd be good. And then, you know, as, as the process stands now, barring any decision Tuesday night after this, everything we have would go forward to be put onto the warrant, and then we would pull things off. Again, the selectmen were willing to work with us on this just this once because of the tight timeframe. But I would, I don't know if you're planning on attending Tuesday, but if you.
I do plan to attend.
You may want to stick around for a little bit afterwards, so.
I have, and I have a client who is, so I'm going to, it will be hard, given your schedule. I've got actually interest in two bylaws for which forums are being conducted parallel to each other or at the same time, so.
There will be a public comment, ability to do public comment online, basically the same survey format we used to do the last one. We're going to set it up. Tim and I haven't discussed this in detail yet, but we are going to set it up to do comments as well. So if people have an interest in something that is side by side, we'll be able to get comments on those. So, it's an experiment, yes?
Sorry, one last suggestion.
Of course.
On the advertising, it's something I drive by on a lot of Wednesday evenings, and I'm sad that I cannot go to, but I know they have a band concert on the front lawn, and I don't know if there's announcements prior.
Ooh.
But if there are, if we could announce, those are people who are obviously caring about the community, it would be great to announce it there.
That's a great idea. It's a good time to do our little, our survey as well, so that Tim and Julia.
Create your own jingle.
There you go.
We could have a band, the planning board band. We'd have to come up with some.
I used to be the bassist in a punk rock band.
Did you really? That's awesome, we should have a punk rock band. We'll have to think of a good name, so. Alright, so it is now almost quarter to nine. Anybody have anything else for tonight's meeting? Yes, Tim?
So, the, the dates for the August 4th?
Oh, yes, good thing. 17th through 19th is what we're looking at now.
17th or 19th. 17th, I think, would be better, just because the Celebrate Milton folks are meeting on the 19th and.
We might want some of them at our meeting?
Yes.
Is what you're saying, yeah?
Yes. But, I mean, if, if, if that's something for everybody, I mean.
I also understand that people have vacations and things that they want to take in August, so.
That's the week I'll be going.
Yeah, I'll be going on the 17th, the 19th, I'll be going that one.
So, that's fine. I think we can, we can, if you give us your materials, Cheryl, we can have it, and I think it'll be less of an interactive at that one, so we won't need, so. If you, are you good on the 17th?
I'm here both, I'm here both of those dates.
Okay. So, alright, we'll have a look and let me know, but I think, at that point, you know, we'll have had the public comments. We'll be talking about tweets, Brian and I and Tim and Bill will probably handle it if you have something there, so. Well, you guys have been fantastic. I've been really impressed at the, the work you've been doing and the support at all[1751.82]